October 23rd.
Okay, all right. So the applicant has a request to continue this item to the next regularly scheduled board hearing of October 23rd for item seven. Board members, if that would sound acceptable for all, would there be a motion to grant continuance? Motion from Rhonda, second from Marla, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries. One, two, three, four, five, six of us, all right. All right, so, motion carries for that, so if you were here for anything related to 310 Court Avenue conditional use on the building commonly known as Spaghetti Works, we will not be hearing that case today. So, might be a little adjustment in seating here for a minute or two, so we'll give that a momentary break. Okay, any other changes to the agenda?
We do have, staff does have one more change that we're recommending. We're recommending that item five located at 4715 University Avenue on parcel 4711 University Avenue be moved to the consent agenda. The proposal is for sale of wine and/or beer by a tobacco store use. As a tobacco store, the use would be limited to no more than 25% of the sales on the premises to be derived from the sale of wine and beer products. This requires a conditional use for a business selling wine and/or beer in an MX2 district. Staff's rationale is there has been support both at the neighborhood meeting and in comments. The applicant is proposing that the beer and wine sales would be minimal and be 25% or less than the gross sales for the premises.
And Frank, if you didn't mention this, is the applicant okay with staff conditions for this one?
That is correct. I did speak with that, the applicant is agreeable to all of the conditions.
Okay. So staff is recommending moving item five to consent for approval subject to the staff conditions that are presented before we consider that. Is there anybody in the audience who would be in opposition to this board granting the conditional use for the sale of wine or beer at a limited percentage at 4715 University? If there's somebody opposed to that, just raise your hand. Okay, you're in opposition? Then in that case, we will have to hear that agenda item, so we won't take any testimony for the moment, we'll take it in its order of appearance on the agenda. Okay, so, any other changes then Frank?
That is it.
Okay. All right, so what we will do here then is look at what we do have on consent, and I will poll the audience on these two items. Item one is a conditional use request in the vicinity of 2719 Forest Avenue for the use of a parking lot for certain periodic events that may involve the consumption of wine and beer previously allowed in September of '24. Is there anybody here in the audience that would be opposed to this board granting the conditional use for seasonal and special events at this address? If anybody's opposed to that, just raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Item two is a conditional use request for the use of a property for junk and salvage use, including recycling, subject to the staff conditions that have been presented. Staff is supportive of that. Anybody here in this audience opposed to that? It's the vicinity of 1623 East 17th Street. Anybody opposed to granting that conditional use? All right, seeing none. Board members, if you have any questions or concerns would like these cases to be heard, so say. If none, would there be a motion to approve, grant approval for these two items on consent? Motion by Marla, second by Rhonda, tag teaming here. All right, so we've got a motion to approve items one and two on consent. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, that motion carries, six to zero. Okay, so if you were here for items one or two, they have been approved. As I noted, give staff about a week to get the decision in order back to you with the approval, and then you can file for any other permits or signage you might need. So if you're here for item one or two, we're complete with those. Thanks for coming in. Okay, so for the regular portion of the agenda, we will hear each of these cases. Staff will first give a brief overview. So Bert's gonna start us off at 1516 28th Street with a conditional use request for construction of a parking lot.
All right. Mr. Chair members of the board, Bert Gross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Item number three, as Mel just said, is a request for a conditional use to allow construction of a parking lot at 516 28th Street. The subject property is located on the west side of 28th Street in between Ingersoll Avenue to the north and Grand Avenue to the south. It would be used in common with the commercial building directly across 28th Street to the east. It currently has the chain of spoke coffee and bike shop in it. Anyway, the subject property currently contains an apartment building. It currently has 13 dwelling units in it, but we believe it was originally constructed as a six to eight unit building that's been retrofitted over time to have a total of 13 dwelling units. This apartment building does have to go through the demolition review process in accordance with city code. That demolition review isn't really under the Board of Adjustments purview, so I just wanted to make note of that. But it does have to go through that process. It's currently in process. They've been tasked with putting together a salvage plan for that as well. So here are some site photos. This is the existing apartment building that would be demolished for the parking lot. This is just another view, and then this last photo is kinda the north side of the building across, you can see there's a vet clinic immediately to the north. This letter is from the applicant, just explaining their need for this parking lot. As I mentioned, it would be used in common with that building across 28th Street to the east. It has the coffee shop building or business in it. There's currently some open space within the building that they would like to have an additional business locate in, but without any parking, they're hesitant to put a tenant in that space. So this is the plan that they've submitted that shows the parking lot. You can see they would have the drive-off of 28th Street, they'd have significant landscaping and buffering. If the conditional use is approved, they would have to go through the site plan review process to make sure it does meet all of the city's stormwater and landscaping and all the other standards. As far as our staff recommendation goes, we are supportive of the conditional use. We do realize that it does require that apartment building to be removed, which, you know, the staff, we never like to see old buildings get torn down. But this, like I said, that is going through the demolition review process, and if it's approved, which it sounds like it is on track to get approved for demolition, it is going to come down regardless. So we are just tasked with looking at whether it meets the criteria necessary for granting a conditional use. As I mentioned, it's in between Ingersoll Avenue and Grand Avenue, so it doesn't really have frontage on either of those two commercial corridors. So staff is more supportive just because it's not like putting a parking lot right along Ingersoll Avenue or a parking lot right along Grand Avenue. We do recognize there have been some parking shortages on Ingersoll Avenue, and so we feel like this could be an appropriate place for a parking lot. Again, if it's not directly along Ingersoll Avenue and it's not along Grand Avenue, so if we have to have parking, this is probably the best spot for it. So our recommendation is for approval. We did recommend seven conditions. I'll just point out the two that we feel are most important. Number one, the conditional use is only valid if the existing apartment building structure is approved for demolition in accordance with documentation and salvage plan to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. And that documentation and salvage plan is really part of that demolition review process that this property is also undergoing through. And then the condition number five is another big one. Staff recommends the condition placed on it that the parking lot shall be available for public parking during non-business hours for the business located at 515 28th Street across the way. So go through the comment cards. We did get six cards back, two in support, I'm sorry, five in support, one in opposition, and then a letter of support as well. Some of the cards in support are within condos at the fringes of this map, which is why only two show up on the map. So here's the first card. It's in one of the condos.
But Bert, just not to interrupt, but the condos are within the area for comment?
Yeah, they're within the 250-foot notification area, right. And then we did get a card from a condo owner that's in opposition. This is the property immediately to the north in support. And then these people own property along the north side of Ingersoll Avenue. And then another condo in support. And then this is a fairly lengthy letter from the people who own the building that like Harbinger Restaurant and La Shell's Restaurant are in. I can leave it up here, but in summation, they're in support of having a parking. They currently have some parking spaces on their property that people are already using that are customers of the coffee shop at 515 28th Street. So, long story short, they are in support. Are there any questions for me?
Questions the board has for Bert? Bert, just a very brief related one here. So from this board's perspective, we're here to look at what is proposed, not what is there now, or maybe what we think we'd like to see kept, or what we'd like to see develop there in our opinions. It's just based on what has been proposed. Would what's proposed adequately safeguard what the health, safety, welfare persons in the area, things like noise, congestion? That's our purview here, correct?
Exactly. Like I said, the demolition of the building is going through its own separate process that the board has no purview over.
And from a policy perspective, this board doesn't set policy on things like, well, we don't like cars and we shouldn't have parking lots anymore, or, you know, I can understand some people's concerns with that, but our focus is very narrowly on what has been presented and how does that fit within the requirements to grant the requested conditional use.
Exactly, exactly.
And the only reason this is really here is because it's not adjacent, it's across the street, right? It's not an adjacent parking lot. If it's an adjacent lot, they could do that by right if they met site plan?
Exactly, yes. Since it's a standalone parking lot separated by right of way from 515 28th Street, it does, it's owned to RX2, which only allows a standalone parking lot as a conditional use.
Got you. Okay, all right. Okay, well, thanks for the summary. So the way the hearing process works, we start with the applicant. So the applicant or their representative, you can come up and address the board, give us your reasoning of why you think we should approve your conditional use here. And just as a reminder, we just need your name, complete name and address as appropriate, and you've got 10 minutes.
Thank you. Shane Divic with CEC located at 2486 Street. We have read the staff report. We are in agreement with the conditions of it. Bert did a good job presenting that. We had one formal neighborhood meeting, and then we also had an informal one after that to continue discussions. I have not heard anything negative about it. All the feedback that we've been getting from the neighborhood is the thing, eat more parking. In our second meeting, we mostly just talked with an adjacent property owner about property lines, about drainage, those sort of things, site plan issues. Beyond that, the owner, Randy Reikert, is here if you have any questions for him. But I'd be, I'm open to any questions you have for me.
Okay. Do we have questions for the applicant? Tom? Good job.
First time, long time listener. Crossing the street, 28th is not a no-traffic street, there's pretty heavy traffic use.
Yes.
Any plans for seeking crosswalk or some type of assistance?
We have not discussed that. That may be something that comes up in our site plan review with the city and traffic department. Most likely, it would be difficult. We'll cross that path with site plan. Right now, we do not have plans for crosswalk, I guess.
Is that pun intended?
I didn't. Well, I guess I didn't.
We'll cross that path.
Yes. Unintentional, but it worked out good.
And kinda related to that, again, this board does not look at site plans and, you know, approve them, but if staff could help and maybe put up the picture of what I would call your conceptual site plan, I'm guessing as engineers, as designers, you try to lay things out generally with probably what the site plan would require from square one, is that correct?
That's correct.
So there's minimum amounts of landscaping to help buffer some things. Are there, is there a proposal for any fencing here to screen the site from neighboring uses?
There's existing fences on a lot of the perimeter of our property. We're also required to put a decorative fence on our buffer with 28th Street. So there is some sort of fencing around all sides except for the north side. We don't plan to put a fence up there.
And you may or may not be able to answer this, but I think, you know, if something's approved in site plan, then it has to remain and it has to remain in good condition. So if you put in trees and plants, you're gonna have to keep them alive. If fencing is required to be in place, you'll have to keep it maintained. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? And again, I won't do this a fourth time, but just briefly, you mentioned you talked with the neighboring property owners. Were they generally then supportive of this?
Yes. Parking is a need that almost everyone I've talked to expresses in the Ingersoll Avenue area. So, yeah.
All right, excellent. Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. I'll check back with you here in a few minutes. So for this next part of this item, is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request for this conditional use? Anybody wants to speak in support? They can have up to five minutes. Good afternoon, sir. We just need your name and address as appropriate.
Hello, thank you for your time today. Tim Rittma, 512 and a half, East Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. I am the property owner of the Reagan House Partners. It's a property just to the south of this. I'm here today to say I'm in support of this project. The property that we're discussing has been nuisance for several years. Police are called regularly. Regular telly. This will help alleviate a parking congestion we have along 28th Street. Project as it stands today is not financially viable and has had decades of deferred maintenance. Mr. Reikert has support from the surrounding owners, business owners, and our property as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tim. Anybody else to speak in support of the applicant's request? Again, just name, address, you've got five minutes.
Hello, board. My name is Lauren Koloff. My office address is 558 28th Street in Des Moines. I'm the director of the avenues of Ingersoll and Grand. We are a SMID, and we're also a nonprofit that promotes economic development, marketing, and events in the area. And in recent years, we've been doing a lot of work around walkability, bikeability, and promoting the streetscape. So normally, I would not be up here speaking in support of a surface parking lot, but today I am. As Bert mentioned in his report, this parking lot will be uniquely placed so that it's not fronting Ingersoll, it's not fronting Grand, it's sort of tucked on 28th Street. This is also, if you're familiar with Ingersoll Avenue, a very popular corner, right? We have a ton of really popular, long-term, and newer restaurants and shops right here, and they all share the on-street parking or very limited off-street parking. And so this additional parking lot would really take some of the stress and pressure off of those existing businesses. Also, I've spoken with Randy about this, and he's very open to conversations about sharing the parking or doing like a validated parking system. I was really happy to see that the board put, or staff put an actual condition in your staff report, because previously, another parking lot that was approved on Ingersoll, there was nothing written down that they had to share, and they don't. So I was glad to see that you guys are putting that in writing now. I've also heard from other developers on the street that they're really worried that some of the parking challenges on Ingersoll could hinder further development, and we definitely don't want that to happen. I think that this parking lot is kind of in the perfect place where we really need additional parking, and that's why we're in support of it. Finally, I'll just say that we are doing, a parking study is actually kicking off next week to address some of these challenges and opportunities along Ingersoll Avenue. And so I think this is just one of those potential solutions. You know, if sharing the parking along Ingersoll was that easy, we would be doing it. There are lots of reasons why different property owners are not able to share with each other. They've got their own needs, and so I think this definitely solves a problem on the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and giving your comments, Lauren. Thank you for your work in the neighborhood. Anybody else wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Anybody in opposition? Seeing none, anybody with relative comments but in neutrality? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any further questions for staff? Anybody? Yes, Cuckoo.
So how has the lack of parking hindered business or other development opportunities in the district?
I'm sorry, what do you mean, like, how?
So right now, the assumption is there's not enough parking there.
Right.
What are the impacts of not enough parking? Is it less business?
Well, I'm sure the businesses will probably tell you they have fewer customers because people can't drive and park right in front of their businesses. They have to park and walk maybe a block or two or further. And I also know an impact is, like we heard in this letter from the people who own the business at the southeast corner of Ingersoll and 28th, that people use their parking when they're frequenting businesses on other properties. So I guess there's some annoyances between property owners and business owners with, you know, people using the limited parking that they have for other things.
Is that measurable in any way?
I don't know if it's measurable. I know like in that letter, the property owner says that they could call a tow truck and have those tow cars towed away that are parking illegally, but...
Follow-up question to the owner. Has the lack of parking impacted rents in any way?
Okay, the applicant will get three minutes for rebuttal, so I'll let him address that. Any other questions for me?
And Bert, kind of a related question to Cuckoo's good question and comments. There was a time when the city and the zoning ordinance required minimum parking on-site or directly related, like, hey, if you're gonna have 10,000 square feet, you gotta have X number of spaces. We kinda did away with that, if I'm correct, because I think the idea was probably a couple things. We wanted to maybe make things a little more neighborhood-oriented, but if I recall, businesses would figure it out on their own. They would either be successful as they are, or they would buy additional lots, or they would, as kinda I think presented here, make deals with neighbors to make the parking work as they felt needed to meet their business model. And that was kind of our change in the ordinance, is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, the site plan for the business across the street that was approved in 2021, it normally would have required 81 off-street parking, or 81 parking spaces, given the ratio of one space per 150 square feet of building. And they actually don't have room for any off-street parking spaces on that property. And they did take credit for five on-street parking immediately in front. But because there was absolutely no ability to provide parking on the property, given the existing 12,000-square-foot building covers that entire property, they were granted a design alternative to waive. We used to have exceptions and variances off-street parking. Now it's a design alternative. But they were granted that since really those five on-street spaces immediately adjoining their property was the only opportunity for parking.
So it's a bit of a balance in condition of the neighborhood, intent of the business, and then how those pieces all fit together here, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so the applicant, if you would like, you've got three minutes. If there's anything you wanna add for information in closing, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to, it's up to you. Just give us your name and address.
Randy Reikert, 515 28th Street, board member. Cuckoo, thank you for the question. This has been a tough building. It's landlocked, there's not a lot of parking, and as many of the people that have spoke, this is a very sought-after location. So in reference to the question, as far as leases and as far as the rate of lease, the demand for the area stays high. The area has done some phenomenal work up and down the corridor, and along with Mid-Am and the city, some of those things are coming to an end, which is, as the demand continues to pick up, we're going to need more parking. And I don't think it was stated in the original conversation, but I have an additional 9,000 square foot that I have not leased, I have not marketed, and that is painful, but I did not wanna overburden the area. And doing so, I thought that that was right. This was not my intent to knock this building down, but after further review and seeing the neglect that has taken place from this building, it was an option that needed to be approached, and when I looked at the finances, that was an option that needed to happen. Again, this was not my intent to bring this building down, but I believe long-term in this location, I believe long-term in the avenues, and I think the rates will still continue to go up, and I believe this will be a value add for the entire area. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Reikert. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion then, go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts, comments, reasoning? The floor is yours.
Seems to me that the areas of concern have been discussed, and I'm good.
Okay. You think it meets the requirements that it won't cause undue congestion in the neighborhood, impair light, and fit in with the general character?
Hope so.
Okay. Other thoughts? Cuckoo?
One more question. So as far as the current building is concerned, are those units leased?
Okay. When we get into board discussion, if it's a discussion between us, that's one thing. I'm not gonna be able to answer that. When it's a question for the applicant, it's best for us to ask questions of the applicant while they're up at the mic versus having them come back and forth a whole bunch of times? So that's gonna be up to the applicant, if you'd like to answer that, you wanna answer that? Once he gets up here, just throw that at him once more.
No, it's a fair question. I appreciate the question. Once again, Randy Reikert, 515 28th Street. The building is vacant.
Thank you, and sorry for making you.
All right. So, going back into closed session now, this is just us time. Any other thoughts? Would there be a motion one way or the other?
I would move to approve with the staff recommendation.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and second that?
I'll second that motion.
You'll second that, okay? All right, I'll let Rhonda have the second. All those in favor of granting the conditional use request subject to the board's condition and other applicable reviews, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries, six to zero. So keep working with staff on that for your site plan, and I wish everybody well in the corridors of Grand and Ingersoll there. Good things going on. All right, so that'll bring us to our next agenda item, which is a conditional use request at 1600 Mondamen Avenue, related to conversion of a building to private vehicle storage.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. As mentioned, the property is located at 1600 Mondamen Avenue. This is a former, located here. This is a former building that was used for worship assembly. The building has been sold to the gentleman who's requesting to use it as a warehouse. He has done some modifications to the building already. This is zone P2 because it was utilized for worship assembly, and within P2, buildings are allowed on the property, and that includes warehouses, so the warehouse is a by-right use. And then, got a narrative from the appellant. As you're reading through that, I'll... As you're reading through that, I'll just kind of give you a little extra information. If I have to repeat anything, just let me know. But while this is a by right use within the P2, the land use designation is low-density residential. As such, staff does not feel that a warehouse use is appropriate in this residential area that is designated low-density residential. We do feel that it would be, it would not safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of residents in the neighborhood, and it would also potentially increase issues of congestion or fire safety as well. And just for reference, low-density residential is intended for areas developed with primarily single-family and two-family residential units with up to six dwelling units per net acre. So a warehouse is considered an industrial use, which would be allowed in the P2. In this particular case, with the land use designation of low-density residential, staff does not feel that this is appropriate use in this particular location. As such, we are recommending denial of the request. We sent out cards, we did not receive any back, but the appellant did do their neighborhood meeting and sent back some information for us, just to let us know how that went. Generally, I believe the summary was that they didn't have any opposition and people were happy to see the building being occupied with some use. Sign and sheet. They had pretty good attendance. And then if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Questions for Catherine? Brief one here, Catherine. This may seem simple as a case on one hand, but sometimes these things, you know, are kind of like peeling an onion. So if this is a P2 public civic institutional district, things like places of worship, not just churches, places of worship are allowed, correct?
Correct.
And it sounds like this is maybe somebody wants to convert this into like vehicle storage, but the day the congregation quit, if somebody just wanted to start storing used comic books in there, that would not be allowed by right then, is that correct in that district?
Well, so in, Bert's going to come help.
No, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but...
Sure. In the P2 district, a warehouse is a conditional use. So it's allowed only if the board of adjustment would grant a conditional use for such. And they're actually lucky the property was already zoned P2 because P2 allows a conditional use to be considered, whereas if it were zoned residential, they would be looking at a rezoning to an industrial district first. And then getting their warehouse that way. And it's unlikely that they would be able to rezone to an industrial district in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So it is to the benefit, the property was already zoned P2, which allows warehouses a conditional use.
So there's, and I'm glad you explained that additional, so there's no like transition of use by right? At a minimum, they'd have to be here, which they are today.
Right. Yeah, if they, even if it was, a warehouse was a permitted use, they'd still have to do a site plan, they would have to meet building code. So if the board does grant the conditional use, those are still things that will likely be some hurdles for them because there'll be a site plan that might have some off-street parking requirements or landscaping. They'll have to meet building code, which in order to store vehicles and other treasures in the building, there's going to be, have to be some structural analysis to make sure it's strong enough.
Okay. And I may need to ask applicant this, but here's the proposal, is converting it to a warehouse for private vehicle storage to store cars, you need like overhead doors. So I'm assuming from what I see here, I don't see any overhead doors or I don't see any like grade level access. Is there some on a...
They've actually already put their...
Oh, I see, okay. And not to belabor this, but I'm assuming such conversions were done without building permits?
Correct.
Okay. Which we should not do in the city of Des Moines. Information and education for those in the audience and at home, always check first before making building modifications. Okay? And if that would be allowed normally, wouldn't we need site plan and you'd have to have paved driveway and...
Exactly, and landscaping.
Right, right. So a pile of dirt and gravel up to a door is not normally allowed.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, anything else for Catherine and Bert? Okay, thank you.
Just one question.
Oh, yes, please.
Does this building have a sprinkler system if they're going to put vehicles in there?
That's a very good question. I would guess it would need that, but I don't know if that would be a building code requirement or not. So if they do get the conditional use, they would have to get a building permit to do the building conversion.
But so it's just a storage facility is what they're talking about doing. There won't be anybody there watching the building 24/7?
Right.
And they're putting vehicles in there?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so when we talk about building permits, then fire code comes into the building permits as well for things. So if they would need to do that, they may be required to. All right, thank you, Catherine. Okay, so applicant or representative of the applicant, as you may have seen how the hearing works, it's your turn. You've got up to 10 minutes to present your case. We just need you to start with your name and address.
Okay, my name is Norleen Gegner. This is Dan Hearn. He's the owner of 1600 Mondamen. We've been partners for 34 years. Dan had a stroke and has aphasia, so I'm speaking for him. We own a few rung properties in the presidential Mondamen neighborhood. Back in 2020, the church group contacted us about purchasing the property so they could relocate. The property was not functional for them due to lack of handicapped accessibility, restroom facilities, heating, and parking. We contacted the county regarding the property taxes. We told the county we would be using it for storage, and it would no longer be exempt from property taxes. The property has been maintained and taxes paid for the last four years. This year, the taxes amounted to $1,408. This summer, the city asked us to pay $100 to put it on the vacant property list. We did. We paid the $400 to have this meeting. We paid over $100 to mail out a flyer to over 40 people who own property within 250 feet of 1600 Mondamen. We had no responses from any of the flyers. We had the neighborhood outreach meeting in conjunction with the monthly presidential Mondamen neighborhood meeting on September 16th. The consensus of the nine people at the meeting was that they would rather have Dan in the property than have it vacant. A vacant building decreases property values and invites the homeless, especially with winter coming on. Last summer, we had a religious organization look at the building to purchase. They calculated the high cost of reupping the building. There's a new roof on it, but they would have to do the fire sprinkler and everything. The building's over 100 years old. And they still would not have parking, so they chose another location. Its cost prohibitive to remodel the building. We're willing to sell the property, maybe Habitat or a developer would want to put in housing. It's a double lot, plenty of room for at least two houses. Dan has numerous health issues. He's spent the last four years storing his treasures, vehicles included, in the building. Dan's activities do not jeopardize the neighborhood's health, safety, or general welfare. His activities do not impair the light or air of the surrounding properties. It does not increase congestion in the streets or public danger of fire, safety, or flooding. It is not a warehouse with trucks coming and going. It's just Dan stopping by and tinkering with his treasures. It gets him out of the house and someplace to go. Until someone comes along that can put the property to better use, please allow Dan to continue using his own building. Thank you.
All right. Hey, Norleen?
Yes.
We'd maybe like to ask you a few questions to understand your case.
Okay.
Anybody have any specific questions for the applicant?
Kind of a curiosity question. So have you had discussion about what it would take if you had to do a site plan, get a building permit? Do you know the ramifications of all of that?
No, I have no idea. This is my first experience.
Thank you.
So Norleen, I want to go back to 2020. Is that the year you and your hus- or your...
Partner.
Your partner bought the property? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So at the time you bought the property, did, and I'm going to start with the county here, but did you contact the county before you bought the property or after?
Yes, no, during the procedure. We hadn't closed yet.
Okay, all right.
Because I thought, you know, I knew we would need to pay taxes on it.
Okay, all right.
So we contacted them.
I understand that.
We had no idea the city...
Okay, so let's go back to that now. So at the time you were looking to purchase the property, were you aware that this property's located within the municipal city limits of the city of Des Moines?
Well, yes.
Okay, so why did you not think of calling the permit or planning office or just coming down to City Hall and going, hey, if we don't want to use this as a church anymore, are there any things we'd have to think about for building permits, conversion, change in use, anything? Didn't cross your mind?
Had no idea. I thought, we contacted the county.
Yep.
They said, okay, fine. And they sent us a notice to pay the taxes, and I thought we were good.
Well, but the county doesn't take care of zoning and building codes within the city of Des Moines. They've got their own out in the county. Some people like them more or less, but here in Des Moines, I, you know, this is, this doesn't maybe help you, but that's just a reminder to folks, before you buy properties, you should always check, especially if you want to make improvements, change uses.
Yes, I told the church group last summer, they better check with the city.
Yes, yes. And I know you own, it sounds like you own multiple properties in Des Moines, so, you know, the same thing applies, as innocuous as a use might be to look into these things.
Yes, we deal with the neighborhood inspection, we get our rental certificates.
Right.
Never had to deal with planning and zoning.
To the best of your knowledge, why did the city ask you or semi-require you to put this on the list of, what was it called, derelict buildings or something?
Vacant buildings.
Vacant property registry?
Yeah.
Okay. It was only because there was no use as allowed in the code, not because it was a nuisance or anything? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just because it was vacant?
And I think Dan made them mad when he put his overhead door in.
Okay, all right.
Because he had just went ahead and did it.
Yep. All right. Okay, well, those are the only questions I have for the moment. Thank you, Norleen. Okay, is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Anybody speak in neutrality? Okay, seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? Staff doesn't have anything else to add, doesn't look like, okay. So I don't think the applicant needs a rebuttal here, they just spoke. We don't have any other questions or testimony. So we'll go ahead and close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. On its face, I quote, "feel bad," but that's not how I can make my decisions. That's not how the law has us look at making our decisions. So we have to kind of look at a number of the conditions here. If we were looking to grant this conditional use, staff is recommending denial based on the proposed change in use. This isn't the first one that some of us have seen of this over the years. You know, if this was a, if this was a two-bay tire shop that closed somehow, been sitting there for a year or two, fine. But to me, it looks like a church, it was a church. It could be converted to that use. I know it sounds like maybe they tried in their own way, but, you know, there are other options for the owner or other purchasers of the property besides something that would require this kind of pretty large change in use for conditional use as a warehouse in this setting. So just throw that out there to start us off. Tom, you want to say something? Put your mic on. Okay.
I move that we adopt staff's recommendation, deny the use. There's just too many open questions here.
Yeah, based on the staff's reasoning.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we got a motion by Tom, second by Marla. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries six zero. You know, there's times I'm not happy, sometimes even with the outcome of the way I vote, but it's based on what we're here to carry out. But I would really encourage you to work with staff, neighborhood folks, and others to try to find a use that can fit for everyone here. All right, so that concludes item four. Then I'll take us to item five. That's a conditional use request at 4715 University Avenue, related to a modification of a use here for a conditional use to allow a business to sell no more than 25% grocery receipts for wine or beer products.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. I'm going to go ahead and show the premises and give a little information about the premises. The property is zoned MX2, so for a tobacco store wanting to have sales of beer and wine, they are required to obtain a conditional use. And so here's the property. It's surrounded in yellow, and it is on the north side of University Avenue. It's in between 47th and 48th Street. The building is approximately 4,900 square feet, and the tenant bay is in the western portion of the building, and it takes up about 2,100 square feet. In the rear, there is a parking with multiple accessory buildings. The business has been in operation since 2017. The hours that they are proposing to be open are 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And so here is a front view of the property, the tenant bay being in this area over here. Let me scroll down. So here is a view of the commercial, it's within a small commercial unit, so there are other commercial businesses within the area. And so for staff, staff look at the typical criteria for businesses selling beer and wine. The applicant has, staff does believe that the applicant has savat, has satisfied all the conditions of approval to safeguard against the safety, public health, safety and general welfare of the public. We believe that it has met the appropriate 100-foot, 50-foot separation distances needed by any business with a conditional use. The business would be held to operating no more, or selling no more than 25% beer and wine, so that is a cap. And they, the applicant has agreed to all of the conditions that we had set forth in the staff recommendation. I'm going to go ahead and scroll through those. And these are typical standards that we look at for any conditional use, selling beer and wine. Now, the applicant, as part of any conditional use, the, it is subject to, at any point in time, the use constitutes a nuisance. The zoning enforcement officer could bring that back for amendment or reconsideration of that conditional use if they are violating any of those conditions, or as I mentioned before, being, operating in a way that's a nuisance to the neighborhood. or as I mentioned before, being, operating in a way that's a nuisance to the neighborhood. Now, the applicant is required to hold a neighborhood meeting, which the applicant did. Here is the letter that they had sent out soliciting folks to attend. And so the mailing list goes out to property owners within 250 feet. And with that, the applicant has indicated that there was a total of four folks that attended, and, you know, the summary's in front of you, but it was discussed what kind of products, you know, how those products would be rotated. The applicant is proposing that they would be more of the specialty brews and local products, so they would be looking to source those types of materials, so it's not maybe your typical stock. Now, with that, we had a total of four folks sending comment cards, all of which were in support. And here is the consent map of those comment cards that were received and the areas in which those comment cards were received from. And that is staff presentation. What questions do you have for staff?
Now's our time for questions of staff. Anybody have any?
Just one question, Frank, there was, it went away too quickly, but the liquor they're talking about, they're talking about the small bottles of liquor?
Just beer and wine.
Just beer and wine, okay.
No alcoholic liquor.
Good clarification. Any other questions? Okay, sounds like we're good. Alright, Frank's got the conditions up here that staff is suggesting. These are pretty typical, correct?
They are very typical.
Alright.
Hey Frank, I have a question.
Heather.
Just out of curiosity, how do you check that these businesses only do 25% revenue?
Good question. That is handled through zoning enforcement, so if we, and maybe zoning enforcement wants to speak to that.
That'd be great. It's a good question.
Chair, members of the board, Chris Halsko, zoning enforcement officer. So in regards to establishing a percentage, we would go out on suspicion of somebody selling more than the allowed percentage, in this case 25%, we would go out and we could conduct a request and audit, and then an independent auditor, I believe, would give us that record keeping, so we could verify to make sure that the subject business is in compliance with the audit and the requirements of the code.
And Chris, generally speaking, I'm assuming, you know, if somebody gets a conditional use permit, you're not going to just start camping on them and monitoring, but if you happen to go into the store someday to buy the other things they sell, and you see like, you know, 90% of the place is full of alcohol.
Yes.
Or casually, everybody that comes and goes has something in a brown bag with a wine bottle sticking out, you're not seeing anything else, then that would be a call to do an-
Right.
To do the request for the audit, if I can call-
For a restaurant, if they, when we go around to do our annual liquor license renewal, we can kind of do a quick walkthrough of the business and the exterior, make sure they're in compliance with all of the zoning codes, and that would be one of the things we would do. A restaurant without a menu is a little problematic if they're supposed to provide a certain amount of business for-
Right.
For sales of food, so.
Yeah, but generally, if it looks generally like what they intended, there's no complaints, probably not going to be a reason to micromanage percentages here, right?
We don't stake out all of these liquor licenses, but we will do an inspection and just verify, as Mel mentioned, making sure the shelf space looks appropriate, making sure that there's a menu in a restaurant, those kind of things, so we're checking those out annually.
Yep, we appreciate you doing that. Alright, good question. Any other questions for staff? Okay, applicant, now it's your turn. Come on up. Either or, both, we don't care. You've got 10 minutes. I think I know who you are, but for the audience at large, let's have you introduce yourselves and your address.
I'm Webster Cranto.
And I'm his wife Claire Cranto.
3515 Southwest 27th Street.
Yep, first, we just want to thank you all so much for having us here today. For those of you that don't know us, a brief introduction. We own a few businesses here. This business we've had in operation since 2017. When you think of a regular smoke shop, it does not apply to us. We're very different, we're very unique from irregular smoke shops. About half of our store is African clothing. We started as a clothing store originally. All of our apparel products, we design ourselves, they're handmade in West Africa through fair trade practices and sent back. So that's how we initially started for two years, and then just happened upon the smoke shop business by chance and took the opportunity. And so we've expanded ever since. We sell a lot of local art, a lot of handmade jewelry, locally blown glass products, and we've been, we've had a lot of requests over the years from our customers to sell wine and beer as well, just because our products that we carry are really unique, and we put a focus on carrying locally made or products that you can't find in regular, like, convenience stores or grocery stores. We put a priority on listening to our community and what they want, and this is something that they have requested and that we've always really wanted to get into, just never applied, so we decided to formally do that this time around, and we had our neighborhood meeting, we sent out our mailers. To date, we have not had any opposition to this, it's just been support, and we think it would really complement our offerings. We do not see this being a nuisance in any way. It is all for off-premise consumption, no liquor, just curated craft beer and wine, basically. Do you have anything to add? Any questions for us?
Yeah, any questions for the applicants? Claire, Webster, just briefly, not that we need to see this here, but sometimes we'll see what the hours of operation are that are existing or proposed. Generally, what days of the week are you open and how early and how late?
No, we close at 8:00 PM, Mondays through Saturdays, so 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday, and we would keep those hours the same.
Cool. So generally speaking, for the last six years or more, business has been doing well, you're expanding. This is just kind of an extra offering. Your whole business plan doesn't pivot on this as a-
Correct.
Minor percentage of your-
We actually have five locations. This is just one. This is the only one that we're applying for this at, because we think it makes the most sense at this location. So no, this would comprise a very small amount of our overall sales.
Gotcha, excellent. Okay, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next part, anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody in support? Okay. Anybody in opposition? Their turn, and you've seen how this works. We just need your name, address, and you've got up to, pardon me, five minutes to address the board.
My name is Renda Lutz, and I reside at 1223 48th Street, which is just three houses north of this business. I've been a business coach, and I've helped many people develop business plans, launch their businesses, and expand their businesses. I truly believe in empowering entrepreneurship in our community. But I'm very much opposed to the expansion of this business at this location and for two reasons primarily. Anything that adding alcohol into this business, I'm opposed to. There's already a bar directly across the street, the Waveland, and just steps south of that is Maccabees Deli that also sells wine, and six blocks east is a full spirits and liquor store. This is a family-friendly neighborhood, and I don't believe we need another business selling alcohol. In addition, is a congestion issue. The photo that was shown of the front of the business had to have been taken before July 1st, because the city has now narrowed that street. Actually, the project is still going on, going down to one lane in each direction, and I do believe there were parking spots taken, decreased in front of this building and the building across the street, where the Waveland Bar is and the Waveland Cafe. There is not adequate parking for all the businesses that are in this community. Again, I live down 48th Street, and I've lived there for 38 years. I've never had a problem like I have now. In the last five to seven years, the parking is horrific. And for those who have lived here long enough or are old enough to remember that Waveland used to have thirsty Thursdays, and the parking was very bad on my street, but nothing like it is now. University is a snow route, 48th Street is a snow route. So the first thing I would say is, once the snow comes, unfortunately, I have found too many patrons at these businesses, they will park right in front of my house. If I try to say, "You're in a snow route, you could get your car towed." I've had numerous people say to me, "What's a snow route?" And then what happens is, they park there, the snowplows come down, they'll come down the street, they'll go around that car. I have to have my driveway shoveled out once. Those cars move, and the plows come again, and my driveway is now packed in a second time. But during the weather, when it's not snow, is one of the hugest problems, is that there are multiple cars parked on 48th Street, just off of University. Usually, every day, there's at least two cars illegally parked there right now. I frequently am calling the non-emergency police number, and sadly, they don't do anything, and so the cars continue to park there. There have been cars parked all the way down to Carpenter and sometimes to Forest that are going to the businesses around the corner, and part of the reason, and I know, now I can't per se say, "Oh, I saw somebody selling, carrying product out of their store," but there are people that are going to the business that is just east of them, closer to the parking lot that's there at the side of the building, and they're carrying their gym bag that are going to the business next door. The problem is, is that people are parking beyond the ordinance at the end of driveways. I've had my driveway blocked numerous times with cars parked beyond the driveway. I'm not the only one, my neighbors as well, and I've literally had three different times that I'm aware of had cars literally parked across my driveway. I've had police out, and I'm very sad to report that I've had police be unwilling to do anything, and I had a police officer tell me it was my fault for choosing to live in this neighborhood. So I would urge you not to provide more zoning for them to have alcohol. I'm very concerned about their hours and the addition of classes and any other events that would bring more people into this neighborhood. I would just choose you to say no to this zoning.
Alright, we appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming in. I also get annoyed when people park on snow routes, and even in the city of Des Moines, you have to have your car off the street when we get to residential streets, but I don't see any relevance to what's being requested here on that one. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, anybody wishes to speak in neutrality? Do we have any further questions for staff? I have two brief ones, whoever would like to answer this. Again, this came out a little bit earlier with some of our discussions there on 28th Street. With the no parking minimums, again, this change in use would not require, this conditional use request would not require review of parking allowances or anything like that, is that correct?
That is correct. It's retail-to-retail use.
Okay, and as far as separation distances, you know, we have an existing tavern, existing deli, but I don't believe there's any requirement for a separation distance here between this use and any other use in the neighborhood area, correct?
That is correct. It would not need separation from the bar that's across the street. It would simply need the separation from a place of worship, a school, public park, daycare facility.
Okay, so staff's already reviewed that and determined it's within allowable separation distances?
That is correct.
Okay, alrighty. That's all I had. Anybody else? While staff's up, this is the time. Nope, okay, alright. So applicant, you've got an opportunity for up to three minutes for a rebuttal or closing comments, if you'd like. It's up to you.
I just want to say that I do understand your concerns and thanks for bringing them forward here, but this isn't going to do much to change any of the traffic, and I can assure you that most of the traffic she speaks of is from Waveland Cafe. Not from us. We bring in very little traffic. I mean, we do well as a business, but it's people on foot trickling in throughout the day. We're not a big bustling, traffic hog type of place.
And you do have some off-street parking there, correct?
We do, and we have additional parking around the side.
Right, and not to pick on the Waveland, which is a great place, but they don't have any off-street parking, do they?
No, they don't.
Yeah. Okay, alright, great. Anything else?
I was going to say the same thing. If people come in, they buy something and they leave. We don't have people hanging out at most. We have maybe two separate customers in at the same time, and that's rare. It's usually one customer will come in, leave, a little while later someone will also come in. We don't host big events that would draw a lot of cars to park.
Great, gotcha. Alright, thank you both. Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts? And before we get to a vote, we'll wait for Tom to get back, but we can begin discussion here.
The hours sound very reasonable to me.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, as far as congestion, undue activity in the neighborhood, based on the general operation, they're not a 24/7 thing with a big drive-through window, okay?
It isn't always easy to find a place to park.
Right.
When you go to the Waveland.
Mm-hmm, especially during breakfast.
Right.
What they're asking for feels pretty niche. I don't think it's comparable to the deli or to a bar.
Mm-hmm, yeah, feel free. If it's just a yes, I agree, that's fine, get it on the record.
It is.
Alright.
I agree.
So Tom, just general discussion here, seems to be kind of a ancillary use only from comments, they do have some off-street parking, other businesses in the area don't, so any thoughts you have?
Well, I just played golf at Waveland a long time ago, and for the last six, eight years, that whole intersection's been goofed up with different sewer projects.
Yeah.
And it's been very difficult to get around there, and I can see how 48th Street is impacted by that, but I don't have, I guess I don't have enough information to say that the businesses are causing the parking, off-street parking.
Sure, gotcha. Alright, Marla's?
I would like to make a motion.
Great.
To approve with the staff recommendations.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion by Marla, second by Heather. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Alright, motion carries six zero. Alright, so again, give us about a week and we'll get a copy of that decision in order to you, and we wish you well with your ongoing business there, and invite all your neighbors, especially within three, four houses away, to come in for your next open house. You bet. Alright, that will bring us to item six, which is a conditional use request at 1730 East Army Post Road, related to a request for conditional use to sell alcoholic liquor, wine and beer. And, drumroll, Catherine is going to be up to bat for this one. She'll give us a brief summary.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines, as mentioned. This property is located at East Army Post Road. It's further out. I'm sorry, let me see if I can pull up a quick map for you.
I know where that is.
You know where this is, Mel, I guess. This is one of your favorite streets.
There we go, now we're in the neighborhood.
So the applicants are proposing to, it's located at 1730 East Army Post Road and the applicants are proposing to construct a new building on this property. This building would be a liquor store, which would be offering alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer. They are located in EX District, so they would be allowed. And the separation considerations, they would meet, which would, so this is one of the few places left in Des Moines that's probably very easy to add a liquor store. Staff is supportive of their request to have the conditional use to sell alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer in this liquor store. We have our standard conditions included as part of the condition of approval. So I think the main one that would be of interest is simply that, as with our typical conditions, the CEO could bring this back if at any time it was found to be a nuisance or exhibited a pattern of violating the conditions set forth by the conditional use. Simply because of the location and being a little bit further out, also in a place that meets separation distance, staff has very little concern with this particular item. Are there any questions you have for staff?
Questions for Catherine?
Are they there?
Marla?
Do you happen to know the hours of operation, or would I have to ask the owner?
I believe it'd be best if you asked the appellant about that. I don't believe I included them in the report.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yep, good question, I think we can cover that. Catherine, can you pull up the aerial there that shows the parcels and the layout? So generally speaking, I'm very familiar with this area, I live down by here, but 1750 on the right-hand side of the east, that's a mini storage complex, correct?
Correct.
1720 just to the west, is that a used car lot office or related to the used car thing? Do you know?
I believe so.
It's not a residential?
On the top of my head, I can't remember what it is.
It's not residential, is it?
No, it is not residential.
Okay. And the use that's there now, it's tucked back there so far, I probably never noticed it, but although we don't do site plan here, do you have an idea of what, you know, the setting would be, how far back the business would be, how they're proposing layout? Do you have any kind of conceptual drawing or site plan or anything?
I don't believe that we had anything. We do, okay. Frank's working on it, I apologize.
I'm just a little bit curious what the, kind of how it's going to be plunked in there.
But with our site plan regulations, typically, they would have to, you know, have the building in the EX a little bit closer up towards the street. Front yard parking may be allowed.
Right, that's kind of what I was curious about with the change in our zoning ordinance. Most of these are set back a little bit, which, you know, if this was required to be shoved up to the front, I don't know that I'd be as in tune with that as well. But again, that's, whatever is allowable there, that wouldn't be in our purview, but I'm just curious. And they probably won't have a vehicle for sale in the right-of-way like I think is sitting there.
No, that would probably not be allowed.
Eye spy with my eye, how's that go? And maybe the applicant has something like that, if that's not something, oh, Frank's got it on a flash drive. Yeah, that can sometimes be helpful for us to see as part of staff presentation.
So this would be the proposed, and it looks like they're proposing parking in the rear, building up at the, up at the property line.
Okay.
And they have trash straight back here, I can zoom in.
And related to that, I know there's allowances in the zoning ordinance for signage and also restrictions on what we can and cannot regulate for signage. Is there anything about how they can advertise the alcohol, or is that one of your conditions?
Let's go back to the conditions, but we do usually have, excuse me. Condition number three, which is one of our standard conditions, there shall be no visible advertisement or identification of any alcoholic liquor, wine, or beer.
Okay, so won't there be a glowing neon from a mile away that says Coors or Tecate or anything? Shouldn't.
Shouldn't it not be?
Yeah.
There may be generic signs for alcoholic liquor, wine, or beer.
That's, I get that, yep. Okay, any other questions? All right. Uh-huh, comment cards, yes. All right, thank you for sharing those, Catherine. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant, we'll start with you. You've got up to 10 minutes, just need your complete name and address as appropriate.
Lloyd Ogul, attorney for the applicant, 301 East Walnut Street, Des Moines, Iowa. My client, who shall apologize for not being here today, broke his leg about a month ago, had one surgery and went back in today for another surgery, so that's why he's not here. This would be about a $900,000 investment on the site. It's a liquor store, but it's going to have the look and appearance of a convenience store and will offer typical convenience store product in addition to prepared food such as chicken. And it'll be a new, modern building with large, large windows and open lighting. Hours of operation, he proposes 8:00 AM to midnight. And then depending on business, he may scale that back and not operate, but currently we're requesting that it be seven days a week from 8:00 AM to midnight. Take any questions?
Questions for Lloyd?
You said 8:00 AM to midnight?
Correct.
Is that seven days a week?
And Lloyd, I appreciate your extra description of the intent here. Does your client have other operations like this in Des Moines or here in the metro or anything?
I believe he does have one or two others and I'm sorry, I can't recall the locations.
Okay, but to the best of your knowledge, they either have a conditional use or operating within the zoning regulations?
As far as I know, his other problems have not been nuisance or had issues with them.
Got it, okay. All right, anything else from the board? All right, thank you, Mr. Ogul.
I would want to add one thing.
Yeah, sure.
Do those neighborhood meetings and we did have neighbors show up and complain about him not mowing and maintaining the site. And that was some good input, he just, given his condition, he just didn't think about it. He's contracted with a lawn company, he tells me they've cleared about half the site and the plan will finish it tomorrow. And moving forward, he'll make sure he has an ongoing contract for maintenance of the site until he actually starts construction.
And since you mentioned it, you know, I just noted there was some, looks like there was like a used car, auto shop, was that your client's use prior, or did he just buy it?
No, he just bought that vacant lot.
Okay, all right, so he's going to be probably making improvements there?
Absolutely.
Generally speaking?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant's request? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant's requests? Whoever wants to jump first, you can figure it out between yourselves, just need your name, address, you've got up to five minutes. And I might ask staff to put the parcel map back or the area map back up there.
Eric Graham, 6205 Southeast 16th Court. I don't know if you can move that to where it goes down a little bit. It's the car lot right there, drops right behind my house and you can see, if you can zoom in to that spot where your mouse pointer is.
Yep.
It is a nuisance. He does not clean that up. The fence that he was supposed to run stopped at my house, at my property line.
Now, are you talking about a different property than the one in question?
I am, because I, I don't know if I can talk to somebody about that after this.
We need to have your testimony be related to the property that is here.
Correct, it is, because this guy's, his is right over there, right behind that, so therefore, there is a concern whether he's going to keep this clean.
Okay.
Presentable.
Okay.
Since I've lived in this property, I have had to put numerous cameras up to my property because I've had somebody come up, use my water. I've also had somebody come down my driveway trying to get in my car. Over on Army Post Road, we have at each four corners, what do you call them, panhandlers?
I know what you're talking about, but your testimony needs to be related to this property.
I'm getting it. Therefore, I'm not in approval of a liquor store being put right there. Bringing more of that around our neighborhood.
I got your connection.
That's the one main reason. Second would be trying to get off our current street there with, now you've got this car lot that's not really bringing any traffic, but down the road, they're doing more development within the area. You live over that area, you've seen the development going on, there's going to be more housing there, more traffic, it's going to bring more traffic there, making it difficult for us to get out of our street right there, which is already becoming more difficult. That to me is a safety hazard. Also during the winter, it's even harder because this, for whatever reason, the city will plow Army Post, cover our, what do you call that, approach? I personally had to go to our church, get our plow, and clear our road so we can get out of there. To try and get out of our road with the approach being the way it is, is very complicated. And then to complicate it even more with more traffic, it's very concerning. I did look up crime rates within putting a liquor store, whatever you want to call it, in the neighborhood, it does increase the crime. We currently, and I looked it up, we are currently in this area an A-plus crime rate, which is good. Therefore, I'd rather not see it get degraded. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Appreciate your concerns and yes, after the hearing, if you'd like to talk to city staff, I'm going to point out Chris. Chris, guy in the white shirts, raise your hand. If you've got questions about nuisance issues on any property in the city of Des Moines, you can talk to Chris about that, he can help.
Because you know, all that site plan for that property is done in a lumbre, we've bought it, we.
Yeah, you can't address the board outside of the microphone, but I understand what you're getting at. Okay, anybody else here to speak in opposition? Come on up, we just need your name, address, you've got up to five minutes.
Good afternoon, my name's Reed Henrickson. My property, I own 6165. My property, I live at 6125. It seems like every time they do a lot, like in the people who did the storage lot, they pushed all their junk to the back, they put up this nice fancy fence for everybody in front can, looks nice, but I got to look at it. So in turn, I can, I turn around and I clean it up. I mow my lot every week, I mow all of it. I don't think that's fair. Then what about water runoff, the property, the other owners, I know it's not related to this, but they still have water that runs under my fence, I put a burn back there, throw the water off to the other side. I have talked to the city, I just will talk to that wall. Sorry about that, you know, but anyways, what else? And the way it's laid out here, that's a nice hiding place for everybody to go. You got the liquor store here in front, everybody goes out back and parks. Nobody watches that. I'm concerned about lighting, how it's going to affect me, coming in my back window. And what kind of fencing are they going to put up? Are they going to put fencing around the entire property? I think that's very important, that keeps people from walking through properties to go to the next property. And I'm concerned about the, what I looked up, this property was bought in June and they haven't been out there once, they clean the weed up in the back, there's piles of crap back there. The previous owners, they were doing a great job and they must have seen a profit and they got the heck out of there. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know, weeds, lighting. Anyway, like the way it's laid out, you're just causing, you're asking for trouble the way the buildings in front and all the parkings in back. And I would like to see a fence around the entire property and I'd like to have the owners take care of the back of their fence too. Not push all their crap back there and put a fence up to walk away. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of trees back there that are dead and are dying because I know that, I've been there quite a while now. And I know as soon as I sat down, I'll probably think of something else, but that's how that goes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down today and your patience in waiting to comment. I always tell folks that city staff will follow up on complaints and determine if they're warranted, but you know, the collection of junk and debris, even the collection of landscaping waste, you just can't pile up piles of dead trees. But with deep lots, city staff probably aren't going to see that driving by, they're probably not trying to sit and stake out businesses like we just talked about. But if you see a concern, contact the city. There's a city app you can download and if people don't like apps or don't even know what they are, the city numbers are on their website for nuisance issues and zoning enforcement. You can always call them. I do a lot, so I can testify to that. But you guys have already spoken, so we're going to move on. If there's anybody else that has not already spoken, that wants to speak in opposition, now's their chance. Anybody speak in neutrality? Seeing none? Applicant, you've got three minutes for rebuttal, you've heard a few comments, if there's anything you want to address or add, we'd appreciate it.
Zoe, you're probably aware that do a project this size, it'll be a comprehensive review, site plan review, and I'm confident that a lot of the concerns that they've expressed will actually be addressed in that process. And I think a modern store like this is preferable to a vacant lot.
Okay, all right, appreciate your comments. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public portion, go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts?
Do you know how close, like, this is your area, right?
Yeah.
Like where are the closest convenience stores? Do we need another one?
Well, it's not a matter of we need another one, it's a matter of the separation distance. So I believe from staff's presentation that this meets all the separation distance requirements. Yeah. So, some people may think we don't need soda pop, that's bad for you. I try to stay away from it, but I have one of those a day. So yeah, it's not a matter if we need another one, it's a matter of how does this fit in within our purview to the general neighborhood. I would say this again, and I said this at the beginning of this hearing on another item, it's not up to us to decide if we'd like a different use here, or I might suggest we build a toy store here. This is what has been proposed. So as it's been proposed, do we feel that it would unduly do all these things that Catherine's got listed here for congestion, noise? do all these things that Catherine's got listed here for congestion, noise? This is a major commercial corridor, that is all there is to it. It was state Highway Five until the bypass was built, then it was deeded to the city. I've been on the city for 20 years to turn this, whether you like it or not, into, you know, divided four lane, put islands and signals in, but the money, we spend our money on fixing the streets we already have, unless the feds give us a nice grant. I've continued to advocate for improvements for a number of reasons, including safety, we got 55 mile an hour speed limit out there, less than a mile east of here. So, the comments that have been given, I don't, on, on their face value, I see where you're coming from. In practice, I don't think this is gonna increase congestion to any great degree. People who are traveling by here already, maybe they're gonna go to Hy-Vee instead, or maybe they don't wanna mess around with Hy-Vee, and they'd rather go here. But I'm guessing that by and large, the traffic that's in this area is already in this area. It's people that are coming and going to their homes, or to work, or from work. I, I have, I would just guess they're probably not gonna be driving five miles away from north on East 14th to come down to a location. But, I'm just looking at kinda how it fits in, that's why I asked a lot of the questions. It looks like the site plan proposed is designed to fit our current requirements, which whether we scratch our heads or not, the city doesn't want parking lots in front of businesses anymore, they want parking lots behind businesses. So, cars are needed to access things, but we don't wanna look at cars anymore. It used to be you had to have a front yard, now we wanna shove the building up against the street. So, no editorializing on that. Tom?
Well, my concern is, that's a lot of hours open, was it 10 o'clock to midnight?
Eight a.m.
to midnight? That's, that's a lot of hours, I think we need, if they would, would they be amenable to?
Well, in...
Well, we're not, we're doing their business plan, but that's just a lot of hours.
From a procedural perspective, I think our purview is the sale of alcohol as proposed, yes or no? Not the sale of alcohol within a certain amount of hours. I think that gets beyond what our legal purview as in oversight may be, if I'm on the right track here, Eric. I understand where you're coming from, but...
Yeah, I, I think if there are concerns about the, the hours of operation, the, you know, the, the purview of this board would be to deny the permit with, if there are concerns about, about those hours of operation.
Well, and I guess...
Not, not try to limit or dictate what the hours will be.
I understand, but we've had residents
I get it.
... from the area complaining, and they live there, and I just was trying to think about whether we technically meet all the setback requirements and
Mm-hmm.
... distance requirements, I was trying to think of practically speaking.
Right.
All of those considerations, so from that standpoint, that's a lot of time.
Right. Any other thoughts? Dave Gare, our vice chair, is not here today, but to give Dave a quote that I don't think he would mind being attributed to, this is why it's a conditional use. If we're inclined to approve this, this does not give them free rein to just run forever and do what they want. It's like a driver's license, you understand the rules and the requirements, if you screw up, if you violate them, if staff sees problems and they bring it back here, we can take this approval away. So after a $900,000 investment, that'd be a huge waste of time and money to start an operation, not do it right, get back in front of here, and we say, hmm, nice that you got your license, and now you screwed up, and we take it away. So what Dave always says is, you know, we can review this again, if city would bring it back with problems, we don't wanna review it again, so that's a big kinda warning on the table, get yourself started off right here if we're inclined to approve this. So, because it can come back to us for review, maybe we could change conditions, or we could just revoke it. And we have done that before, yes. All right, any other thoughts or motions, one way or the other? I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the conditional use, subject to the staff conditions as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Mel, second by Marlaus, all in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, opposed, one and two. Okay, all right, so the motion does carry four to two. So, from our perspective, continue to work with staff on your site plan, your other necessary approvals, and we wish you well with your business fitting in down there. Okay, that'll move us to, I think, just some housekeeping business, yes, there's two things. We'll start with minutes, since Rhonda mentioned it, board members have received the minutes from the last hearing, those that were present at the last hearing, if you've reviewed those, are there any changes? If not, would there be a motion for approval of the minutes? Motion by Marla, or, motion by Rhonda, I'll second.
Sit down.
All those in favor that were here? Aye, that's one, two, three, four, five, Carlotta, you got us fives, okay. Cuckoo was not here. All right, so our other item, it's no big deal, but I think formally, we have to look at the proposed meeting schedule for 2025 and approve that, which is usually the fourth Wednesday afternoon of each month, aside from what I think I see here, November and December would be the third Wednesday, they've got an asterisk for that, so this is staff's proposed schedule for 2025 that would then be published on the city website. So Frank, anything you need to add to that?
Nope, it's fourth Wednesday of the month, except for Nov- November and December.
Yep.
When it's the third.
So, would there be a motion by the board to set the meeting schedule for 2025? Tom?
Second by Rhonda.
All in favor? Aye.
I oppose.
You better be. All right, so, schedule for 2025 is passed, six to zero, so city, you can go ahead and get that one posted. And then just as a reminder, we'll see, depending on our agenda length for next month, the city may ask us to stick around for kinda what, what we wanna call a, a semi-regular kinda board education session. It is open to the public, but we would just review, you know, state law, city ordinance, applicable provisions in city code, just kinda some updates. Certainly for new members, it's helpful, but for all of us, it's a good reminder of what we do here and how we do it, and I look forward to it. And we haven't done one for over a year, so I think, I think it's time. So keep that in mind for next month. Otherwise, no other business, this hearing is adjourned.
Second.
If you want to add anything.